Mr. Bob, I'm gonna ask you to leave the principal alone.
Joe, I had record, I thought you were starting.
I was. I said hi to Dave, sorry. Alright, we're gonna get started. I call this meeting to order on the November twenty-fifth. Twenty eighteen village council meeting. It's four eyes, page six of legs.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Terry, can you do a roll call please?
Bailey.
Here.
Oh, boss.
Ah, here.
Come, here, Logan.
I make a motion to excuse Ms. Logan.
Support.
This motion with support, all those in favor? Those opposed? Moving on to approval of the agenda. If there's no objections, I'd like to move old business seven A employee performance reviews down to item eleven, closed session. Both have requested closed session per the open meetings act fifteen dash two-six-eight A.
I'll make a motion, a motion to approve the attendance amended.
I'll second.
There's a motion with support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, those opposed? Alright, moving on to approval of our November twelfth minutes.
If they so choose, then a motion with approval in minutes is provided.
Su- support. There's a motion with support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving for called on the public, this is called on the public on non-agenda items. And you may follow up with your, well instruct staff to follow up with you later time. Do you have any comments? Have I? Seeing none, public here. Hi, public.
Hi, Dave.
Thanks for the opportunity. I mean, that would take me down.
Alright.
We're trying to learn something.
Alright, public comment one more time, seeing none, moving on to old business. Moving on to old business seven B, the employee policy now, Mary Jo.
Uh, yeah, again, this is something that was put together for you to go and get, get some of that into it. Having staff in here meet some of these requirements that limit hours, that we make a break up staff and part-time positions more and more. I think it's much more beneficial to us to have someone here four days a week versus two here, two there. But there's some things that if I get treated when you do over thirty hours, in the here describes thirty hours or less of part-time. So one would then take from that that thirty-one or more is full-time. It's not described or spelled out that way. But all the things that were described in there for a full-time status were replication or any benefits or things like that. Our concern is we just want to make sure we're addressing. I, I know a couple of examples in the police department that were working over those hours when I arrived here and, and a couple of them still are. But we're still treating them wholly as part-time employees and stuff. So I'd like to correct some of those things, make some corrections here. There's a union contract up here, then there's zero, and I think there's a lot of room in the middle to provide some things to the employees that are here that are doing great jobs for us.
Joe, how many employees, I, I see there's a note here that we may want to amend some of this to state individual employee agreements are not subject to this policy. Because like in your case, you have an agreement as you're appointed official. You know, there's the union contracts that are similar to this, but, but this is not exactly it, the DDA director, I think. So how many employees is this specifically governed?
In our office, there's two, uh, front office administration type, uh, Kim and Vicky. There's Dan, our code enforcement, who's fifteen hours a week, who's no matter what we do, will more than likely stay in the part-time status because that was the whole goal. And he's not even close to thirty hours on a regular basis, or anytime actually. Uh, in the police department, we have Robin. She has a new last name now, formerly known as Zena.
What's, what's her official?
She's the department clerk, uh, sorry, police department clerk, is the caller.
And that's not going to run under the police department?
Correct. Correct, she's now a union member in the, in the police hours labor council. We have few part-time police officers, but those are covered under the police contract. And then we have one part-time seasonal DPW worker that's covered in their contract. So outside of those contract positions, we pretty much have Robin and Kim and Vicky.
And Dan.
And Dan.
What about Dan?
He kinda has his, well, he follows the DPW contract in many respects.
But as a department head, it's more of a...
Yeah, he, he does follow under this.
Okay.
That's right, because initially he told me they had begun the process of putting again an individual, planned agreement with him a few years back. Then they just got to the point where it just stalled and they said, well, just stick it where you're at. He mirrors a lot of what's in the union contract. Some things come out of here. It would be nice to clear that out too.
So in this, your highlighted areas are your recommendations?
Yeah, you know, this first question, I guess, too, um, on page, the second page, which is number page thirteen, actually, um, the, the pink part there. We could, one thing that came to light to me recently is by, by law, we aren't allowed to offer medical insurance and things like that to employees. What I found out though is the carriers, Blue Cross, um, the Kennedy, some other ones, they are heavily typically have written in their agreements across the board, from what I'm told, that thirty-two hours a week or more, you're supposed to offer at least to an employee. And I said, well, offer doesn't mean we have to pay for it though, right? And agent tells me that they, in the bylaws, Blue Cross, that you have to at least offer to pay the single rate for the employee only. So I don't have anything other than a verbal conversation regarding that. I don't have anything from Blue Cross that shows me that. I'm sure their bylaws and such are, or it's in there somewhere. So I, but even if we wanted to amend the thirty hours a week is considered part-time, we get to go up to thirty-two hours, maybe to try to keep us for those that are going to be below that level out of these health benefits costing like that.
How many employees are of our part-time under thirty-two hours now?
Just Dan.
And Adam.
And Adam, yes, well, but he's already covered under the con, the union contract.
He's really bad.
No, I gotta look, it's, now I didn't look at as, as the part-time police officers are, no doing there.
I don't think there's anything in DPW that covers anything about part-time other than, hey, we got part-time.
Okay.
In the summer.
Yeah.
And the beach workers.
Oh, yeah, and the beach workers and the seasonals in the summer that are...
So the front office, how many hours in the front office staff are there?
Thirty-two, thir- to thirty-six. Kim wasn't doing thirty-two because she was coming up to the later stage. And Vicky was doing, she was doing eight hours a day, and now she's doing nine.
Okay, and Dave's fifteen?
Fifteen.
And the police clerk is?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
That's the way it was, it got here, it hasn't changed a bit. It was told to me because that would keep us out of the benefit realm, which doesn't add up to our policy. There, but that was in place, since she's been in our league, it's not exactly three hundred years it is, I don't know, four?
Okay.
Right after the closure of the dispatch, what was that, sixteen?
I've totally blurted that out of my mind, I have no idea.
Okay.
I think that was sixteen.
Yeah. So that was wonderful, and, and there's several of them in there left. I'm trying to find a way to, you know, some things, where it was stated in before of eight hours per day, I would move to nine, just because that's what they work now.
I do have a problem with that though.
Yeah.
If the law says every eight hours, you get two half-hour breaks.
Two fifty-minute breaks.
Every four hours, you get a fifteen-minute break.
Right.
With an eight-hour shift, you're supposed to get an hour of lunch, I believe.
It says in the, we have to offer to, I think, I didn't...
Is that what I can state laws?
I, I think, I think, I'm less saying. I'd like to see Bob's opinion on that.
Yeah.
I think they have state laws.
I think Michigan doesn't provide anything unless you're a minor.
As far as requiring it?
Yeah.
Well, you have to offer.
I was saying we shouldn't.
What I remember, that federal standard stuff is for every hour you work, you earn like four minutes break. So in seven half-hours, it's thirty minutes. Because then you take three minutes off, you work seven and a half hours, that's how it works out. So fifty-two, fifteen-minute pay breaks in a day.
No.
If that's the pay breaks...
If you work four hours, you get thirty minutes, not three and a half.
Four hours, you get fifteen.
Let's double check this, this stat line, there is some state regs that I think govern that, I don't know, I don't have them in front of me though. Let's just double check.
Yeah.
See what it is. They work nine, they work nine hours, so they're coming in eight, leaving five?
Yes. And they take basically, they don't ever remove their desk and take a break, there, there's some stall times, yes, where they're not busy getting to the phone or dealing with someone at the counter. They technically, Kim goes out on smokes, you know, four o'clock in the day, so that's basically her thirty minutes.
And there's no requirement any hour over eight or anything for overtime or anything?
There's the exemption for, uh, they would get it, but the thing is, if you, if you're scheduled for nine or scheduled for ten hours, some unions they can do ten hours. Then the ten-hour day is a normal day, anything over ten is overtime.
Okay.
Depends what the normal schedule is, which is normal birthday is. Yeah. They don't ever like leave and take away and go away for lunch. It was, it was in here, it said we have to offer that a thirty-minute unpaid lunch. One of the, on page thirty-six, where it's about tough spots being had, leaves, those vacation times and stuff like that. A lot of these were based on eight-hour days. So, you know, forty hours would be five days. If you went to nine-hour days, that would be forty-five hours, so that you, rather than increase it that way, I would. Basically, five days of the week. Well, four days, you give four days off, it's the same thing if they have the week off.
And is this only for full-time employees?
Yes.
So anybody over that thirty-two is a recommendation?
Yeah. After one year of continuous service, employees shall receive, it used to say five days vacation, which was a week. Well, we only do forty hour, uh, four days now, I would say move that to four, it's the same.
Is there any, is there any benefit of us staying open on that Friday?
Something.
Bringing, bringing it back up to five days.
I can't remember, I was back working in some of it.
I know that's a separate issue from this, but it's kind of connected.
It's been there, I think it was early part of sixteen, I think it's like three and a half years now.
Okay.
I think in some communities, a lot of communities, even just kind of moving that to where they're open longer hours because they find it, some of that works nine to five can never make it in there. If you're open five days, nine to five, but if you're open four to eight, which Davis Township switched to a couple of years ago, or Mountmore Township worked like seven to five. Someone can make it in before you end. Or some of them maybe afterwards, so there's chosen kinds of those. Having longer hours on some days makes it easier to get in before or after work. Like I said, there's some places in town, if you work nine to five, like the farmer's market, people would say, and Davidson, the farmer's market was Fridays from like nine o'clock in the morning. Well, if you work Mondays Friday nine to five, you can never go.
Right. So these are just based on if we stay at the four days a week, okay.
One of the things I, and I was telling you earlier, that on the bottom of thirty-seven, they're talking about holidays and stuff. If a holiday falls in your scheduled hours, then fine, it's a holiday, we're closed, and you can get paid for that for full-time. But this idea of if it falls on a Saturday, well, we have to take next Monday off to make up for it. That's always been a stretch in my opinion, a lot of union contracts have them in there, I don't agree with it. It just, all of that there, I highlighted, X out that. Because right now, if you were scheduled to work twenty hours per week, part-time employees working at least twenty hours per week, so I'll be always receive holiday pay for the hour day would have normally been scheduled to work. So if you have someone working three days a week, eight hours or nine hours a day, and one of those days is a holiday, then they would have that day off with pay, even at a part-time status. And that's reasonable, but, but I don't see why I'd have to change this way outside thing if you go to a full-timer now. If you're closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and Saturday is the Fourth of July, we got to close Thursday or Monday to make up for it. I just don't think that's necessary. My personal, I could be wrong.
Doing the night work here, I don't think it was necessary, we did it anyway.
Yeah. I think those and this group, we have a great staff on our staff now, uh, and, and like Robin has been here and does her job well, dedicated. They would be just happy to be, have the day off and be paying for it, which currently those do because they're over twenty hours. But if we go to them and said, oh yeah, by the way, the Fourth of July is Saturday, so we're gonna take the second off, on Thursday to make up for it, they would be shocked. That's really, is that necessary?
Okay.
Couple of days listed on here, because this was done in sixteen, were Fridays. Good Friday day after Thanksgiving, well, they don't need to be listed if you're only gonna be recognizing days of in the normal work week, Monday was early.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So why even have mine there? If they're on there, and the current status is that we got to make up for them somewhere in their Monday through Thursday. If you're, if you're Monday through Thursday is your schedule, and you give them good Friday off, you're guaranteed to have a Thursday off.
For a year.
Yeah, a good Thursday off now, forever too, and paying for it. Because the Fridays, they're already off, we don't, we're not scheduled that day, so you make up for it in a day that's not the schedule.
Okay, that makes sense, because we're closed on Friday.
Yeah, same thing with the day after Thanksgiving. Again, when you're working Fridays, yep, then they give, that would be a day you wouldn't normally, wouldn't be working.
I'd like to see Martin Luther King Day as one of our holidays, if possible. It's widely recognized, most county, federal government. I think it just makes sense to follow suit. I don't think I'd go as far as President's Day, but that's also another day.
Or Columbus Day.
No, Columbus, yeah.
And, and just to remind everybody, both of the union contracts, the police and the DPW are up in twenty-twenty.
Okay.
Both of those will be in negotiation here, February, March timeframe. Um, it'd be nice to get a feel for where we're at when we start working on the budget. Alright, we'll look at today's.
Okay.
So again, this is not pertaining to them.
Right.
Those are, I think, the same days that are in the union contracts, so those ten days currently. We have a lot of things, I have a lot of notes that I'd like some changes, clarify that, there's a lot of weird room, I think, in that union contracts of things that just making more burdens on us for the payroll and all this, certain things happen at different times of the year and stuff.
Okay.
But, and it's in here for the payment of lieu when it comes to medical. I don't think it's necessary, again, to get somebody that has none, then you have a union, and then looks like the other end. I think our staff would be happy with something, but not demanding the full end result. Because that's one of those costs that are pretty hefty. Now, if somebody needs it, maybe there's something personal that can be worked out for somebody that needs it, that's fine. But for somebody that perhaps doesn't need it, their spouse already has it or something, I think then we should be happy. It, it's a way to keep those costs under control.
Well, the problem is, is if you don't do the payments, what's the, what's the, we have taken the health insurance, they have two health insurance, we have double coverage.
Coordination, we'd be coordinating, we'd say which one's first, and we'd, we'd say, well, if it's required, if you, if you have a policy, this is how I've done it at Richfield for years, we didn't, never do it that way. If theirs was cheaper and better, then they would do it. If theirs got to be expensive, we had a person whose husband worked at Ford, but he was salaried for years and years and years, it was fine. All of a sudden Ford came to him, they're not giving, oh, by the way, it's going to cost you three hundred months for your wife, now plus twenty-one hundred dollars deductible. Well, it wasn't fair for her to be paying five grand out of her pocket and the person next to her on ours. So she came on to ours because it made sense, it was fair. But if you already have it somewhere else, we'd say, alright, why, why is it, you know, is there a huge discrepancy of what you're giving the pain out of your pocket?
If my husband has me on his insurance, why shouldn't my employer have me?
And I'm not saying we shouldn't.
Because not now.
But if you're happy with yours, you want to stay, then we shouldn't pay you, that's my point. If yours is free and yours is hap- and you're happy with it...
But if I'd rather have two insurances, now it's costing the village five thousand dollars to insure, insure me, or you know, it will give you two thousand, which is the buyout.
And there, and there is some happy medium there somewhere to say, alright, why do you need it? Uh, if you said, look, now mine costs me twelve hundred a year plus a thousand dollars deductible, that's twenty-two hundred. I do want to come out here, and then that's a conversation you have to work out. I know in union contracts, they work it out up there that only if they could prove that it was more costly to stay on that one than what our plan was, so there's parity amongst the employees, then we would allow them to be on ours. Okay, back to the Ford thing, it wasn't fair if one employee sitting there to spend three or four handed gear on her husband's plan when the employee sitting next to her gets theirs at the township for free. When there, when she heard it was free, she stayed and she liked it, it was great.
Right.
Her situation changed.
But even if hers was still free, we still have to offer her our insurance.
I don't think we have to.
Oh, I think I'd have you in court so fast, you didn't offer me insurance.
If you show us, if the thing has shown that you already have credible coverage, then...
So now your business has had incredible coverage. You're offering your employees health insurance, I want the health insurance, tell me in court, no, that I can't handle.
Well, that's what we've done for years in my past, if we didn't, if it was needed, we would cover it and if it was a direct cost benefit, we would allow that as well. Well, it's...
Right. I think it's happened here before, everything horrible's happened here before. I'm just saying.
Well, anyways, that's one of my ways of looking at it and say, look, I, I don't, there's no demand for this, none of the employees that are, that are this effects have no idea that I'm even looking at it really, or, or I'm just been looking at it for a while. Thinking there's some holes there, there's some things that I would like to see fixed.
Before we move on, this is including family leave, what kind of say?
Pregnancy is a, well, there's two things there, pregnancy is covered under your health insurance, what you're talking about. I don't know if...
If you're full-time, pregnancy is a disability, and trust me as a mother, it is.
I don't know if we have anything written in either the union contracts now for time off for pregnancy leave or that. The Family Mental Leave Act doesn't pay you though, it allows you to...
I know, but they, they, so part of this said, if there was a disruption in employment, you lost vacation days. And I just want to make sure we're providing for that gap.
Well, if somebody's just off on leave, they're, they're still be employed here.
This isn't the whole policy.
No, no, I...
It's the whole thing on pregnancy, and it's disability. You go off, you get sixty-six percent of your wages, but you don't pay taxes on it.
Yeah, they, they give you so many weeks, I think it's like up to six weeks or something like that. So again, that's if you're covered under the disability plan. And, and you...
If you're full-time, you're under the disability.
Yeah.
So there's more to this?
Yeah, that was...
Maybe that's what I'm missing right now.
Yeah, I did want to print out all sixty-some pages and send them in your package, I was wanting to highlight of the ones that I want, the areas that I need to address. You can address anything that you want. Matter of fact, somewhere in that land, on one of those pages, is there social media policy that was talked about a few years ago, is part and parcel of this. It's almost mirrored, I think it's a mirrored image of what we discussed before.
Could you send, could you send all of this digitally?
The whole thing.
Yeah, because if we're gonna make changes, I guess it makes sense.
Yeah.
You know?
I just want to, around the path to move in and, and again, because there's some employees that have been here for a while that are over that threshold, but they were, they've been doing it for years. But they're not being, it's not being adhered to in here exactly, and, and it's time to fix it, fix it, or, or we start hiring new part-timers and split our workforce up to avoid it. Which I don't think is a good idea.
And so part of this removes the vision insurance too?
Um, I, I can't recall, did I have a cross out?
Yeah.
Okay, perhaps. But again, health insurance is one of the most important things to talk about. It, you know, glasses are important, these are prescription glasses, my free glasses cost me two hundred dollars, six years ago.
My free glasses just cost me two hundred and eighty.
You know, and I, that was six years ago.
Right. I guess, you know, my, my position on it is that we should offer more than, than less in terms of, you know, we, to be frank, our pay is not great. And so if we can help offset that by, okay, you get vision insurance to get, you know, insurance for your family, um, you know, let's, let's look at, you know, and again, maybe it's even keeping some of those, you know, you get four days as opposed to four, again, because we have, we have, we have talent that we want to recruit, we've got talent we want to retain, if we want to keep people around, maybe we sweeten the pot a little bit on the benefit side.
And, and I'm, and I'm striking this down and pairing it down to give us the least cost of entry, so to speak, to get into this correction mode. By all means, um, you know, the larger picture, we're taking the job, and that involves you guys, your buy-in, so what do you guys feel? You're a man.
I get no benefits, so I'm gonna die.
So, I'm just saying, so that, that, I was trying to pair it down and say, alright, we can at least go here, here, and here, and make some progress of making it right for, appreciating those who are there working, try to retain them, things like that. Obviously, it wasn't looking for any action tonight, it was more of an opener.
Okay. Yeah, if you can send the rest of the...
Yeah, I'll send the whole document over.
You can re-roll that and...
I just didn't want to print out sixty-five pages or something. So.
Okay.
Alright.
Anything else on that before we move on?
Not really.
We'll look forward to seeing that again as old business in the future. Employee policy, okay, oh, sorry, uh, council appointments for board and commissions. Um, you know, since it's November, I figured we'd bring this back up and, you know, some meetings maybe don't work for all of us and I know the, um, the Polyand Trail meeting has never worked for me just because of my, my work schedule. Dave, you've been on NODA, has that, has that worked for you, or is that, you know, is that something that you can attend? Not to put you on the spot.
Um, yeah, I can attend it.
Do you attend regularly?
Not as much as I should.
Okay. I was thinking maybe like we put Kate as the, the, the main, and then maybe put you as the alternate?
Um, sure.
Okay. And then similarly for the Polyand Trail, I'd go down as the alternate, or Maureen, you can stay as alternate if you'd like, I was thinking about...
Alison.
Alison, okay.
Or typically, there are three.
Alison on there.
Okay. Okay.
I heard her bones.
Trying.
I'm not supposed to, there, I think that's it. I'm still looking at some DDA, um, appointments.
I'm sorry, I was the alternate on the Polyand?
No, 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 you won't be, I'm, I'm about to make a motion, so I'm just thinking about...
I'm sorry, sorry.
No, you're good. So I moved to appoint, um, one second, there you hear. I moved to appoint, um, Ms. Kemp, uh, the member for the Polyand Trail Management Council with Maureen as the alternate.
I'll support that.
And just, see, their, their, their terms aren't specified per se, that's why I quoted them right out of the section there.
Yep. Oh, and before you support it, can I keep going?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, and Ms. Logan as the member for NODA with Mr. Bailey as the alternate.
You got more?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, I'll support this.
Alright, there's a motion with support, any discussion?
Question? When are we gonna do the rest of them?
Um, let's see here.
Yeah, down playing.
Because the planning commission's like, we expiring the DDA and ZBA.
Those are concordant with your terms.
Just for the...
Not out, I mean the public.
Um, the DDA is good now, we just have two vacancies. You're still good with the cable commission, Maureen?
I'm neat and narrow, I believe, you're excited.
Will you have John Volbahn as the alternate on that one?
I think you take him off.
Okay.
He's not done, but...
Let me amend my, um, motion to include Maureen as the cable commission and myself as the alternate.
I'll support that as well.
And let's see here, I think planning commission was good, chair, in, yep. Zone, yep, MML, yep, everything's good there.
If you don't want to stay, annual appointment, so like MML, SimCon.
Yeah, those are...
Do those next month or something?
Oh, those are annual appointments too?
Yeah, I, I couldn't really find anything, I had them down as annual appointments, I didn't see, but they only have...
Can I further amend that motion to include Joe Frost as the delegate for MML, um, Kate Logan as the alternate, Kate Logan as the delegate for SimCon, and myself as the alternate?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. There's an amended motion with support, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on to new business, seeing none, um, back to public comment. Moving on to your new business, seeing none, um, back to public comment, okay, you, public? Is it public comment?
How bored are you guys today?
I wish I could say so.
All right.
They were bored enough, they're all snapping.
I guess that's up here, I should say something.
You should say something, Mr. Waco.
Yeah.
Sanity against Dora, get a very, very, no.
Now, I haven't attended any council meetings in quite a while, not even sure how long. But anyway, um, as you know, I'm real active in the community, and people ask me all the time what's going on, because they think I have all the inside track. So I thought maybe I'd better go to a council meeting, occasionally now, to, uh, get the inside track, um. I see tonight.
This is not a typical council.
Yeah, this is not typical council meeting, I see tonight you're doing, preparing for a union negotiation.
Next spring, yeah.
Yeah, so, but it's good to be ahead of the game. Um, I know that, uh, and you're all aware too, that, uh, our project for M twenty-four has already started. Even though it's not supposed to start officially until March, um, Consumers has been the, uh, the primary contractor right now. And they have pretty much located our whole community, and we're down to our one lane, so.
Good practice.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, it started, and, uh, I didn't know if there was anything that, uh, you as council members are aware of that. Has been presented as, um, an opportunity for local businesses to help deal with the traffic issue, and the, and the non-traffic issue. Not being accessible to their sites as much as they'd like to, and if, if that's even been made public already, which means I missed it, and I apologize. But I hadn't heard of anything, and people seem to think I'm gonna, I know all about this, so I say, I know, I've talked with engineers, you know, a couple of months ago, I knew this was gonna happen. And I know Detroit Edison's coming right behind consumers, um.
They've moved some poles and.
Yeah, they've dropped their poles off already, but, uh, I'm not sure when they're gonna start, I can't even get them over my project over there, two years now. So they're behind also.
Come on in, and I could talk with you more, because we don't want to get off on this tangent as far as we have our head, um.
Yeah, because I know, I, I don't want to interrupt what this is, because I can see by the agenda, that's basically what you're talking about tonight, and I really want a closed session, and, yeah. So, yeah, okay.
We've, we've been talking about, um, and I just talked to Joe about this the other day, a town hall, uh, style.
That would be great.
For businesses, um, I've invited the Oakland County One Stop Business Shop to help come in, you know, they can help on the business planning side of things, is, is the thinking. Um, so it's just a matter of nailing down a date here, trying to avoid the holidays, and, um, and that's, I think, the next step. We also have hired a communications liaison, um, who's working with the village and the DDA, so we're gonna see more, um, more, you know, posts on the downtown, um, Facebook page. We're gonna see more press releases, update the website, just to get stuff out there to the public more frequently. Um, you know, one business owner had told me, you know, we really need a flyer at hand every week with the updates, but we're reaching out to a community of thirty-five hundred residents, so. You know, I, I, I gotta strive home the point that our website is going to be that center for all of that information, um, so that's gonna be where all the updates are.
Which is great, except for all those who else don't like to go on websites.
I know, right.
I like to look at the billboard down there.
Right.
By the pen soil, well, that's what's happening this week.
Right, and the, the paper's tough, because it's delayed, you know, a week or so.
Right, that's always delayed.
Um, so, you know, we're, we're gonna, and the new, the new communications person is really good, and I know she's got some strategies that she's working on too, that are above my knowledge, so. Um, so more stuff's coming.
All right, great.
And while we have you here, how's your project coming along?
Well, it's moving, and, and those of you who get to go by down East Burdick Street, it's one of the few routes that's still open. And, uh, it's moving, uh, we had, of course, we had our little snow and.
Yeah.
Terrible cold there for about two weeks, now we're back working on it again, because we've got, this is beautiful weather.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Right now, so hopefully it'll stay for two or three weeks anyway, before it starts getting cold again. But we had a slow start this summer, um, the masonry is up, it looks like it's up quite a, quite a bit, but it's only, that's only the first floor. Because our, our ceiling heights are fourteen feet, so it's up about eighteen feet right now.
And that's the two-story building?
That's the three-story.
That's the three-story, all right.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's just, um, we'll be ready for our first set of trusses in about two weeks.
Okay.
And then we'll move everything to the inside and run up our, the next nine feet, and then set more trusses, and then run the rest up and up. Hopefully, we'll have it, uh, start finishing it before it gets super cold on the inside.
Right, okay.
We'll see. We were shocked.
When we first ground on the.
Joe, leave a agenda.
Yeah.
But that's not how you.
I haven't, Joe, I think Joe hasn't seen me a long time either.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks, Dave, this, twenty, twenty twenty, you know, I keep telling all my subs too, I said, we've got it made, because Oxford's gonna be, north and south's gonna be tough. East and west's still gonna work, but I, as I'm driving back home tonight, about, you know, five-thirty, because I couldn't believe eastbound traffic on West Burdick. I mean, it, from the light to the cemetery, top of the cemetery hill, already. I mean, the people are moving, or they're changing their routes now, it's, it's already happening.
All right, thanks, Dave, we'll go for it.
All right, thanks.
All right. Uh, council comments? Well, let's do, uh, let's go to closed session first, we'll, um, do the council comments when we come back.
I'm making a motion to go into closed session, for the performance ideas of the village manager and the quick treasure under MCL fifty-two sixty-eight. Kind of shaking support there.
There's a motion with support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we are now in closed session.
Count, count, Frost.
Yes.
Bailey, helmet, yes.
Is there a warm place for you to go if you're hanging out?
All right, we're back to open session, and, um, and a good review of our, our two employees, so, um. Moving on to, there's no, no actions from the closed session, correct?
I have nothing.
No actions, all right, um, so moving on to our next item, which is a journey.
Did we do council?
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, council comments, um, we'll start with Maureen.
We did have a cable meeting earlier today, we approved their budget, if anyone would like a copy of that, get it done.
Can you mail it to everyone?
Yes, I'll scan it tomorrow for work, um. It's interesting, I'll, I'll tell you that, it's interesting. Everybody have a nice Thanksgiving.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, well, of course, well, everybody else, I've been tracking the streets, um, and, um. And then, uh, this, uh, West Berlin twenty-four, and got to drink the road, and said, oh my God, there's going to be a crash here. I should have reported it. Couple days later, there was a crash there, just, just about, just about exactly as I anticipated, so. I guess the message is, when you see something that don't look right, tell somebody. Because I don't feel good about not having reported the hazard there. That's all I got.
All right. Allison?
Just, uh, happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and you have a good holiday, but I think, I think that's probably what I had to say.
Okay. Um, to me, um, same thing, happy Thanksgiving, um, good work, um, both of you this past year, and I'm looking forward to the, the next year, and the years beyond that, so. Um, um, yeah, that, that, that's pretty much it, DDA, I had a meeting, um, the other day, um. I agreed to chair a committee for, um, the Main Street Transformation Strategies, um, but I'll talk to, talk to you guys more, you know, um, a little bit about that. Because I think we can integrate those transformation strategies, it's kind of a new model for Main Street, where some of the old committees kind of drop off, and. More holistic and more of a market-based approach to, to the downtown, um, uh, approach, but maybe some of those things could be tied in, and maybe this committee can be like a steering committee for even the updated master plan. Um, that's kind of what I was thinking, but I figured we'd wait till after Thanksgiving to, to really kind of talk into that, so, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, any comments from Joe or?
All I want to say is, uh, that, uh, after Davidson coming down to Oxford in the playoffs last year and getting beat right in front of me. Davidson's bounced back, and then we play at Ford Field this Saturday, the state championship.
I'm a card bill, too, so go cards.
State championship, farther than they've ever been.
Congratulations.
So I'm gonna have to go down there now, Saturday, right now.
Nice, class.
A.
Your tickets available?
I have no idea what the situation at Ford Field, they've got me, I mean, I know.
The whole town's could go.
The other divisions, the other divisions might be playing, you know, might be multiple games that day, I don't know, uh, but I just wanted to thank you, that's pretty awesome.
That's pretty awesome.
Oxford beat us in the playoffs last year, and we beat Upire this year, me and Tommy, I bet going, I won a donut, um. And, yeah.
Well, when I interviewed for the DDA job, I told them, I said, I will, um, support Oxford and everything, except for when we play Davidson. I'm sure it's on camera, someone will be saying that, so.
Yeah, we took her like a match here.
Terry, anything for you?
I don't know, I don't know, I'll make a question or a turn.
Support, motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is closed.
Hi, I'm gonna go.